Welcome to the, I haven't looked at my watch. The September 11th meeting of the Davenport, City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of the zoning ordinances for hardship variance, special use, and appeals. I'm Dan Darlin, Chairman of the Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Members present today are, from your left to right, Bridget Boye-Carlson, myself, John Clefman, and Kristen Crawford. Staff present today are Laura Berkeley and Scott Copes. If you have a mobile device, please turn off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone here will conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the Chair. The only exception to this standard is that staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure we are properly conducting our business. If anyone wishes to speak on a particular agenda item, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. By practice, each person is only permitted, one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice is at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they'll be permitted to speak to answer that question. But I'll ask you, keep your response limited to that specific question. Are there any corrections of the minutes from our last meeting? Okay.
The call to order, you weren't here last time, so you couldn't have called the...
It was me.
Okay.
And I believe, as far as the request to table was, the motion was made by me, but I believe it was seconded by...
Okay. Anything else?
Other than that, no.
Okay. With those notes, are there any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And the motion passes. We have one item of new business, or it's old business now, today, and that is a hardship variance 25-07 of Carrie Panoso on behalf of OGAD Properties LLC at 3170 East 53rd Street for hardship variance to construct a multi-tenant freestanding sign at the same access point and within 36 feet of an existing multi-tenant sign. Section 17.12.06.0.D. .4. Point, small case a. That's my favorite part of the meetings. Allows one sign per street frontage and one per access point if at least 75 feet apart from any other multi-tenant sign. And this is in Ward 6. Is the applicant here today? Okay, great. At this point, may I have a staff report?
Scott Copes, Neighborhood Services Division. So the site is located at Elmore and 53rd, and there are a number of businesses that are existing there. You can see those in yellow. And then the labels in white are where there are multi-tenant signs. There's three of them. One at Elmore and the north property line, one at the intersection, and then one near the T-Mobile access point. So the request essentially is to have a multi-tenant sign, an additional tenant sign within the 75-foot separation requirement. The proposed sign is only going to be 36 feet from the nearest multi-tenant sign. And so that would be the proposed one here, and then the existing DL would be right there. We've talked about in our staff report about the definition of multi-tenant signage. We also talk about zoning lots. The very first slide here, this is three or four properties put together in one zoning lot, and therefore they're allowed the multi-tenant signage. This subject property, so here's the zoning lot. This subject property is actually a flag lot, a double-flag lot, that has frontage that goes on Elmore, but also 53rd Street. And so they are allowed a multi-tenant signage in each of those locations. And each location does presently have a multi-tenant sign in each location. The one is to the east, and this one is right there to the south. The applicant is proposing one to be right to the west of that flag portion. And that's why we have a distant separation problem. It's only across the driveway rather than having a 75-foot distance between the two. We talk about flag lots. Flag lots, by their very nature, end up having the bulk of the lot behind the existing frontage of the street, and therefore it's often difficult to see the buildings that are located on flag lots. This is the applicant submitted site diagram. It's essentially a measurement from here and a measurement from there. Last year's staff asked for additional information and drew this site plan and confirmed verbally that this is accurate. There appears to be just enough room to meet our landscape buffer around a proposed sign without going into the curbing there. So this is where the proposed sign is going, and that's the buffer. This is a shot from 53rd Street looking west, and you can see approximately where the sign will go. The building behind that is the T-Mobile building. And this is a little bit more zoomed in, a little bit further down the road. And this is as you approach the entrance. So here's the existing multi-tenant signage, and there's what's proposed. We did send out notifications to adjacent property owners, and last year and this year, we had one comment, and it was the same party commenting each time. This was emailed and made a part of your packet. So you have seen this. If you want me to read it, I can read it.
Just to clarify, the HV 2408 was last year's case?
The 24, yep.
Okay.
And our findings. The petitioner has not demonstrated practical difficulties or particular hardships associated with this property nor justification for additional multi-tenant sign. Approval standard number one, application of the ordinance does not create a hardship. Approval standard number two, physical and topographical conditions do not limit the site. Approval standard number three, unique circumstance is not established. And approval standard number four, protection of essential character has not been established. That's per the analysis of our staff report. And the request is a convenience to the applicant. Staff recommends a denial request 2507 as proposed. And that's the conclusion of the staff report.
Okay. Couple of questions. So, and I'll put the map back up that shows the locations of the current signs. So the east of the driveway from the proposed sign is already a multi-tenant sign for the same subject property?
Yeah, for that zoning lot, which we have in the zoning lot map.
For that zoning lot, so that's all the properties?
It's everything that you can pretty much see here in this photo. Nothing further to the east and what you can see to the north, that is not part of the zoning lot. That's where the auto dealer used to be. That's not included in the zoning lot.
So does the current sign contain the same information that the proposed sign?
When you say current sign, you mean this DXL sign here, right next to the driveway?
Right.
Right now, it does not advertise the applicant's property.
Okay. But their sign off of Elmore does?
Their sign after Elmore, the sign face hasn't been changed. It still says Diamond. It hasn't been updated for this new building.
Okay. All right.
I shouldn't say new building for this new owner. Are these the new uses located in the building?
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions for staff?
I have a question. In the alternatives to hardship requests, it just stated, like, the third alternative is to install a five-foot-tall directional sign up to four square feet. I know that's pretty small, but I just wondered what the requirements were on that or what the thinking was behind that.
Sure. So generally speaking, directional sign is to get you where you need to go. So it's actually additional signage that's allowed in the zoning code over and beyond your typical monument sign that could point you in the right direction. So for a flag lot, that might be helpful because you're turning in, and which building do I go to? So you can have smaller signage a little bit further in to tell you, no, you go this way and then turn that way.
And they're not considered freestanding signs because of the size of them. Also, our new code allows for logos on directional signage where our old code did not. So that is an advantage over the new directional signage. So obviously, that's not the best solution, but it is a alternative, along with the other alternative that was mentioned, improving that, or refacing that diamond sign to actually accurately reflect what's in the building.
Sure. I was just curious, because I did drive around, and it is, I'm like, I wouldn't know anything is there. But I also, that diamond sign, there's like a tree in the way if you're coming around the corner, so I couldn't even see it. Is there any leg to stand on, like, to ask, it's a neighbor, you know, to cut down the tree if it's blocking the sign?
Trees can be trimmed, but a lot of times, some of the trees are required when they're put in as landscaping.
Tree to the north or the south of the sign?
It's probably south, maybe.
I was coming down 53rd and turned right on Elmore, yeah, by the noodles. And I was like, I thought there was a sign in the packet, but then I didn't even see the sign.
Also, I think that's undersized. It could be a lot bigger than what it currently is.
Those are my questions.
All right, thank you.
I have a quick question. And I think maybe we discussed this in last year, but the sign that is the Enterprise DXL...
Yes.
There's no way to incorporate that?
So in the application for this year, the applicant stated he reached out to both, to the property owner, on both sides, and they weren't interested in incorporating? We don't have any documentation to that level, but that was stated in the application.
Okay. Is there any situation where they are required to because of the fact that?
Only if it was originally addressed in some kind of covenants or agreements that are already out there that they weren't honoring. So that's a private, it's not city-regulated kind of agreements.
So because DXL Enterprise has a sign that prohibits them from having one, or at least within 75 feet or?
Right.
On that street frontage.
Right.
So they could have the one on Elmore that's already on their property, but not at that location.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right. Seeing the applicant, you can go ahead and come up and introduce yourself and present your request.
I'm the owner of OGAD Properties LLC. We purchased this property in 2019. The property is located at 3170 East 53rd Street. Under new ownership, we've been unsuccessful in leasing up the space. And just to give you a history of the space, this building was built in 2002. Regent Financial was there. They were not successful. They went out of business. They sold to Trinity Group in 2012. They went out of business. They sold to us in 2019. And we have been unsuccessful to this point in fully leasing up the space. We're about 20% occupied at this point. We are proposing a sign at the entrance of this property. Per the code, we're allowed two signs. And as you can see, our property has frontage on both Elmore and 53rd. Our address is 3170 East 53rd. At this point, we do not have a sign at East 53rd. Even though our address is 3170 East 53rd Street, this is very confusing to our business owners and their clients, and they find it very hard to find the location and come in through that entrance. We have a hardship to the current businesses and to our space. As you know, there's five properties along Elmore, or I'm sorry, along 53rd. And each of these properties has a sign on 53rd. We're the only one that doesn't have a sign on 53rd. 3120 is 53rd, 3150 is 53rd, 3220, 53rd, 3260. All four of those have signage on 53rd because that's valuable signage. And we're the only one that doesn't have signage on that road, even though our address is 3170 East 53rd. We were asked by the board last year to ask the neighboring properties for some consideration for further signs. I emailed Dr. Pedicar out of Peoria, and I emailed him, said, it's my understanding, well, we talked about the four reasons, the four options I gave him. I said, allowing me to use 50% of your current sign, the board suggested that, taking down your sign and putting up a combined sign in your property, take down your sign and putting a combined sign in my property, or allowing me to add signage on your property. He politely responded to me via email saying, I do not approve of any of the proposed, it would be detrimental to my tenant. I also reached out to Thadden Hartog, who is part-owner of the DXL Enterprise. And I asked him to, you know, give me a letter, give me something proving that he was not in favor of this. He told me he would not, which I would not if I was in position too, because if he gives me a letter that says he's against it, that would give me some ability to come to you and say, here's proof that these people are not playing ball with me. I've proposed two different signs. One has a, just posts on the bottom of it. The other has, per the code, the shrouding on the bottom of it that is per code. I'm okay with either sign. Whatever makes everybody happy is fine with me. If the T-Mobile feels that it would block their signage, I'm 25 feet off the ground. You know, the bottom of my sign is about 12 feet off the ground, and it goes up to 25 feet, 24 feet. So it's above the DXL Enterprise sign. So most of the traffic's going from east to west in that area. So really, truly, I'm not going to, my sign is above theirs. It's going to almost appear that it's an addition to their sign when you're driving down the street. If the T-Mobile is concerned about that, the base of my sign blocking visualization of their building, then the option with the two posts on it, which is against what the requirements are, would be the best option for that. I'm not suggesting that that's the only option, but if that would make the T-Mobile accommodation and owner happy, I would be more than happy to put that sign up. Otherwise, I'd be happy to put the sign up with the shroud on the bottom, which is per code. This sign is under the square feet of the code. I'm able to put two signs up. The only hardship is the fact that I'm close to a neighboring sign. That DXL sign, Enterprise sign, we don't own that. That's owned by the neighboring property. The gentleman that owns that building is a real estate agent in town, and he does commercial real estate. And I do commercial real estate, and I'm a Realtor in town. And he explained to me, and I already knew this answer, was the tenants in those buildings pay for significant rent because they have signage on 53rd. And for him to decrease the amount of signage that he has with his tenants, even by 50%, would be significant that his tenants would be happy, and it would affect his rent with his tenants and the rentability of his space. Likewise, the rent of my space. And that's why we're having difficulty renting this. We put some money in the building. We're trying to make it better. And it would really help by putting signage on 53rd and getting us on par with the other properties that have signs on 53rd, that have frontage on 53rd.
Does anyone have a question for the applicants?
You said that you spoke to or emailed the property owner of the DXL Enterprise. What about T-Mobile? Is there a way to be incorporated into their sign?
He's the one that responded that they said it was against anything I did.
Oh, that was T-Mobile. I thought it was the other.
No, T-Mobile's the one that said, we're against it. And in my email to him, I asked him, I said, can I use 50% of your sign? Can I take down your sign? Can I put up a new sign? Can I take down your sign? Can you put up a new sign? Can I put a sign on top of your sign? He said absolutely not. He emailed to me, and that was his response. Now, Thadden Hartog, who owns the other property, is smart enough to not give me a letter that says that fact, because then it would help me prove my case that it's a true hardship. And my sign is going to be above that sign, so it's not going to obscure anything of that sign. It's going to appear to be an extension of that sign when you're driving down west on 53rd. And it'll only come to elucidate itself to the fact that it's two separate signs as you get closer to that signage. It's going to be above that.
And did we address what's on the corner sign? Is that?
It's probably hard for you to see on the bottom there, but that's, it covers the tenants on that corner lot. So it's Starbucks, Noodles &amp; Company, AT&amp;T, Charles Schwab.
Each of the signs along 53rd covers just that property. So that one covers the 3120, 5345. The T-Mobile sign covers just 3150. The DXL Enterprise sign covers just 3220. The Fortress sign covers just 3260. I'm the only landowner in this area without a signage on 53rd with an address of 3170 East 53rd.
So for staff, since he can put a directional sign along that driveway, right? That's within code?
Yeah. Anywhere along the way to the building. And wall signage, too, would be an option.
Right. And what is allowed to be on the directional sign?
Oh, it could be an arrow. It could be the building name and address. It could be a logo.
Okay.
But it would have to be once you're turned into that parking lot?
Well, they're restricted in size. So it's maximum five feet tall and six square feet.
The proposed location of the proposed sign would be allowed for a directional sign. It would meet code requirements because there's an easement there that they have to be out of. So it's going to meet all setback requirements for a directional sign if there was one there.
So is that a driveway that goes back to that lot? Or is it a grassed, divided area? So does that lane only allow them to go back there?
So there's access easements across all of these properties. They interact amongst themselves. I mean, the parking itself is separate from those access easements, but there is a small grassy area next to the driveway where this is being proposed that would also be appropriate for driveway.
So where the verbiage is for, where it says proposed sign, is that actually an access into the T-Mobile parking lot? Or is that?
There is a point there. Yeah. You can't see it in the street.
Basically, going there, you can get to the DXL, you can get to the Fortress, and you can get to the T-Mobile by going left or right at that first entrance.
Gotcha.
Yeah. The street view might show it better.
I know we can't make anyone do anything else, but technically, then if the DXL sign was 40 feet away from where it is now, then they would be allowed.
So the way the zoning, the way the zoning ordinance reads for a zoning commercial lot like this, they can have one, and then one per street frontage, and then one per access point. So technically speaking, they could have one more. It's just that the DXL one is at the access point. So if there was an additional access point, which won't happen, he could put the sign there as well.
So basically, when these properties are developed, that's the time when the property owners negotiate who gets what signage, because it's a common signage for the zoning lot. And so that happened in 2002 when it was built prior to this owner having the property. The similar for kitty corner across the road for all that development was THF development. They had all sorts of multi-tenant signage, and it's all something that, when it gets developed, that's when that gets divvied out. There is the diamond sign that is available to update.
So if the DXL Enterprise sign was about 40 feet to the east of where it's currently at, which is probably more directly in front of the building instead of at the access point, then the proposed sign would be within code?
If there is an actual 75 feet between the two signs, that would be correct, yeah.
And I asked the owner of the property if you'd do that, and he told me he wouldn't. Now, each one of these properties were built at different times. So they refer to the property that's multi-tenant across the street. All that was built by one developer, one owner, the whole thing. All these properties were built two to three years apart, one at a time. So there was no, you know, negotiating the signage upfront with the whole multi-tenant organization of those five lots.
So when you asked him if he would be interested in moving the sign, did you offer to pay for that?
I did, and he said he wouldn't do it because he wants to be right by that entrance, because that's more valuable right by the entrance.
So you're...
And he's not interested in incorporating his sign into yours?
He is not interested in losing square footage of his sign, no. And he's not, it clearly is an economic advantage to his tenants and his property, and the value of his property will do that. This will affect my taxes. If I have 100% occupancy, and my tax rate will go up, and I'll pay more taxes. So all I'm trying to do is pay more taxes.
Yeah.
I apologize. There's a limit to the height that the sign can be?
Yes, we do have a height limit in our sign.
And the square footage?
Yeah, and square footage.
And both of those, I'm under those with my...
Yours is under that.
The one, yes.
But adding yours to his would be over that?
That has not been reviewed.
Has not been reviewed, okay.
But that would need a hardship variance to do that?
No. I don't think that that's over the square footage requirements, but it's not been reviewed.
The square footage of the DXL sign, The, I'm not, the, the square footage of the DXL sign, that sign right there, is virtually at the highest limit of what you can put as, for a sign.
That has not been reviewed by staff.
But that is a fact.
And I get, and this really is something for you to decide, I, I get that he likes having a sign at the entrance, but if the sign is moved, then he could, could he still have a, a directional sign? So if the DXL sign was approximately 40 feet to the east, could he still have a directional sign at the driveway as well?
Yes, directional, directional sign is to be allowed. Um, that's a separate code section.
So he could have two signs instead of one if he...
Oh, so are you saying for, for petitioner to have both his multi-tenant sign and a directional sign?
No, for, for DXL enterprise, if their sign was moved 40 feet to the east, could they also then have a directional sign at the driveway?
I don't...
And, and so, yeah, it's directional separate, yeah.
Try and come up with, yeah.
The, the intent is to navigate parking lots.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's not possible to have the tenant sign north of that little alcove in the parking lot? So...
I don't own that property.
I thought that was part of the property.
It's, my, my property runs, if you see, it, I, I own half, basically, if you, if you, if these, if you look at the, right.
Okay.
So I own, I own half of that. So I don't own that, the, the only thing I own is that grassed area there. I don't own that till I'd be putting my sign on their property.
I mean, he would be able to, um, put it kind of back by his building more, um, back further.
So he could have a directional sign at the driveway and then have a larger sign back by the property?
Yeah, he, I think that would...
By the building.
I think that would work. Um, I mean, wall signage also helps too. Um, so I don't, I don't recall any, um, wall signage, but I, I also didn't specifically look for it.
Some of my tenants have signage in the window, and from 53rd, the signage is not big enough for anybody on 53rd to actually discern what that is, because it's so far back. So the idea of putting a sign on my property does not accomplish the same thing that putting a sign on 53rd does.
Sure. Your sign would be able to be much larger than anything in a window, though, I would assume.
But it would be divided with multiple tenants, so you're not going to see one sign with one tenant that's going to have four or five tenants on it, so it's going to be actually the same size, if not smaller, than what the, what's in the window now.
Is this a digital sign?
Uh, I'm proposing to do a static sign with a digital sign on top of it, yes.
Which we deny actually review the, overall. I just want to make it clear that staff didn't actually review the sign to meet, to determine if I'm at code or not.
Where does that location, location consideration? Which we're trying to is, so the ordinance is, addresses sign clutter essentially, right? Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from board members to the applicants?
I guess I have one more about that diamond sign. Do you have any plans to do anything there or replace it?
I probably will sh- shine it up, modernize it a little bit, but the point is, nobody sees that sign. So just as you elucidated earlier, if I put a twice as big sign up there that Laura s- suggested, you're still not going to see it. It's not going to, it's going to be of minimal benefit, and the city won't let you cut the tree down, so this tree's going to be there, the sign's going to be bigger, it's going to be obscured, so it's really a secondary thought. And by fact, I, I'm all out two signs, a sign at each entrance. So that sign really has nothing to do with the fact that I'm asking for a sign on the other side. I spoke to all my tenants, and they, they would love a sign there. Of course, they're not paying for it, but it, it would, it would be of huge benefit to them.
Is there a, uh, a way or a method for us to be able to, or the city, I should say, to be able to require his neighbors, if you will, to reply yes or no in favor of?
No, we can't compel them.
Yeah. Can, can one neighbor be compelled to trim their tree?
I, I think that would be a neighbor-to-neighbor conversation. I, I don't know, that's, it's probably not as big an ask as the sign, but I don't know.
But to trim it, it's still going to obscure the sign. That's, the, the tree, its base is got, is, is transparent, and the top has leaves on it, that's where the sign would go. So trimming the tree, but by, it's only has to be 10 by 10, the tr- the tree, top of this tree's going to be at least 10 by 10, whether the tree is trimmed or not. But again, that has nothing to do with this. The fact is, I can put two signs here. That sign on that area has nothing to do with it. I'm able to, by, by the, the rules, I'm able to put two signs up, one at this entrance.
I, I think that's slightly misleading.
Yeah. You're allowed to have, yeah, you're allowed to have a sign at that entrance, provided it's not within 70...
Right.
Five feet or of an, of another sign. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak in favor of the request?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Sarah Emma Regolato, and one of the tenants at 3170 East 53rd. Um, I'm new to air, this area and just opened my business. Um, we're a building of the majority, it's women-owned businesses, small businesses. And, um, not knowing, I did order a feather flag and put it out on 53rd trying to get some visibility from clients driving by. Um, it did result in some clients, and that was great, but we were asked to take it down because I didn't know that it wasn't allowed, um, the temporary signage. So I've since folded that and put it in, uh, my window of where I rent, um, but it has not helped. Um, I also have a neon sign in my window, um, that has not drawn in any other clients. Um, and then I, I did speak to the other women in the building, um, and they have, they weren't able to make it today due to family things, but we have, um, letters of their hardship and the expressing of that.
Okay. Can I ask, what was the size of the temporary sign that you put up by 53rd?
Um, the feather flag, I would have to look it up. It was the largest feather flag that I could have ordered, um, from, I think it was, I think it was through FedEx, but, and it just said tattoo, and it had my phone number on it.
Uh-huh. Roughly...
Roughly maybe like nine feet, I would say.
Nine feet long, okay. Nine feet long?
Nine feet tall.
Nine feet tall.
Are you familiar with what a feather flag is?
I am not.
So basically, it's a pole, and then they kind of, it'd look like a feather.
Got it, got it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It wasn't...
And she, they are prohibited in our code, um, which is probably why you were told to take it down.
Yeah.
The, the site is allowed 32 square footed of a banner, a temporary banner, just not in the form of a feather flag.
Yeah, so it could, so it's like grand opening signs are allowed, um, things like along those lines.
Got it. Okay.
Those have a, a temporary, like, amount of time that they're allowed to be?
I think it's 30 days at a time.
Yeah, so my, my record is 21 days every half year. When you move in a new business, you get it a bonus of 30 days, so it's like 21 plus 30 the very first time a new business opens up. All right.
And I, I frequently hear from clients that have made it in, that it was hard to find, or they didn't even know there was a building back there. Um, I, I actually have on my tri-fold marketing materials that were located behind T-Mobile, because that's the most visible building in our location, um, to try and get people to understand where they're going. But, yeah, a lot of people do use that drive just for the enterprise and to access the bank.
Okay. Does your marketing information have the building address?
Yes. Yeah, and directions coming from both, both sides.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Um, anyone in the audience that wishes to speak opposed to the request? All right. But we did have the one emailed, um, opposition. Um, applicant, do you have any final comments? Okay. All right, board, now it's time for us to discuss. Thoughts? I mean, I'm, I'm sympathetic to, to the need, um, but also understand the concern for the sign clutter, um, issue.
To be neighborly and...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Uh, to be, uh, neighborly neighbors, if you will, uh, and provide a response. I, I struggle with that. I understand the plight of the applicant today. I just, I'm, that bothers me.
Yeah, agreed. I, I guess my thoughts are leaning to what, what is allowed and is not being done is a directional sign that could include the address, um, logo, whatever that might gain the benefit that they're looking for. Or at least to have that attempted. Because you have some, if someone has an address that they're trying to find, and Google's helping them trying to find, um, and it's that 3170 53rd, they're driving along 53rd, you know, they're looking for an address, and you don't see an address to turn, um, but there's a directional sign there with an address, logo, whatever, um, that, that might gain them, gain the benefit they're looking for. And still meet, and still meet current ordinance. Any thoughts?
I guess I want to understand better where the directional sign can go. Does it have to be once you've already turned? Or can it be...
It can be right there. It can be the same place he's proposing.
Right, where he's proposing.
It, it's just about the size, so to the size...
But it has to be on his property.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really matter for that perspective, and then he can actually, anybody in this development could say, you know, DXL this way, T-Mobile this way. Like, that's the point of the directional sign, is to point you in the right direction. So it's not just one, it could have, it could be further in at different turning points too.
Scott, could you flip back to the street view facing west, approaching the turn? That a pop showed it? Right? Yeah.
So it's just a matter of the directional sign would have to be shorter and smaller? Correct, okay.
Yes, I'm thinking it's visible there, but if I was in the right-hand lane on 53rd, would I be able to see it? Like, how far back from the curb would the, okay, that's better. Um, so I'd still be able to see it. I was wondering whether or not the enterprise sign would cover it, if it was a small sign, but I can see the base. Okay. Hon- honestly, this, this is a, a challenging one for me. I mean, the, the strict application of zoning ordinances are what they are. I would wish the neighbor should be more neighborly, especially if he's willing to, to fund, you know, joining signs or moving signs, and, um, yeah, if that DXL enterprise sign was moved 40 feet east roughly, um, then he would need, need to come before us to put that up. But, but we can't make him do that.
Can I, can I point a border real quick?
Sure.
Because that was read, that email that was read in was not given to us. We would like it for the public record.
Oh, sure.
Especially if it's a, a decision factor involved in your decision-making.
Yeah.
We would like the email that was sent and also the reply. It's, it's hard to know what was requested without seeing, seeing it.
Is he allowed to come back up to the podium?
And the issue is, I can hear you just fine, but the microphone's above the podium, so to be on the record...
I, I can provide that. I also have the email that I sent the, um, owner of the DXL enterprise, because I called him and had a discussion with him, because I know him well enough, I know him and his wife. Uh, even though I know him, and he was a former colleague of mine, uh, he still refused it.
Yeah, if you can provide those, that'd be great.
Yeah. Can I add one thing to, to, a directional sign?
Only if the, only if the board chair allows.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the, the directional sign, the purpose of a sign is so that folks that are 100 to 200 feet away, as they're driving 45 miles an hour, can see that area and anticipate the fact that there's, the turns there. This, the, the, that's the whole purpose of that sign. The purpose of the sign is not when you drive up to know, do you go right into here, left into there, whatever. You're already in the area, then I think that would be appropriate to have a small sign like that. So, yeah, there's the, too many nails.
All right.
You don't have to wait on that record-keeping for your discussion. We can handle that later.
I do have another question. Um, just thinking out loud, if, if he was to put a directional sign at that area that he's wanting to put it, and then on the area further back, even though it's a smaller area, would it be allowed, maybe with a variance, uh, to have that taller sign but set back on that area there?
Just to make sure I understand you correctly. So you're thinking a sign back here?
Um, no, so where that little entrance is into the T-Mobile right off of 53rd.
Directional sign.
Just past, so the directional sign there, but then in that area back there...
I don't think he owns enough actual land to put a sign there.
I thought he owned a part of it.
It's a sliver. I don't think it would be enough for an actual sign to go on. It's mostly drive aisle at that point.
Okay.
But I, I thought you meant back, up here, he has a little bit of land sweeping one would fit, but, um, I, this is...
Would he still be limited to the same height back there?
Un- unless he comes with a hardship variance.
Any other questions? More discussion? Kristen?
Yeah, I don't have any other questions. I just, um, I'm with you. I'm sympathetic to the cause, but I'm trying to think, like, what is our job? You know, if it doesn't meet the code, and staff is saying, does it meet any of the hardships? I would like to say, yeah, do it, but I want to make sure I'm following what we're supposed to do.
And, and that's, and that's our role. So the, I think there's still options that could be played out by the applicant as far as signs in the back. I understand his comment on the directional sign, other than advertising signs, I'm, I'm not a marketing genius, or a marketing anything. If it's a spontaneous thing, like you drive by, go, oh, look, it's Whitey's, I'm going to turn in, right? Um, then, then that sign impulse would do something. If I'm looking for my tattoo arts, in this case, I have an address, that, I, I don't need that, right? I just need, I need something to affirm that I'm at the right location, in which case a, a directional sign with an address on it, um, would do that, in my opinion. So... If there's another discussion, um, then I think we're at the point to make a motion to the affirmative, so our motion would be to approve request HV25-07. Before we do that, um... I'm just thinking, if there's any reason to, to table, if there's any other information we need in order to make a decision. Okay. So I'll take a motion, um, to approve request HV25-07. Approving is, we always, we always motion the affirmative, so we motion to approve, and then we vote yes or no on the motion.
So it, to, for clarifying further, if you wanted to pass it, you would vote yes. If you didn't, if you didn't want, uh, if you didn't agree that the sign should go there, it would be a no.
Correct. So we, we motion to approve, and then we vote yes on the motion to approve the request, or we vote no on the motion to not approve the request?
I move for the, uh, request approval of HV2407.
25.
Or, excuse me, 2507.
I'll second.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please? Sorry, Brian Carlson?
No.
Clefman?
No.
Crawford?
No.
And Arland?
No.
All right, um, so it did not get approved. So there's things you can do, and you can work with staff, um, new, let's see, if, if they want to, if they had something different to present, if it's substantially different, that can be presented. If it's not different, it, it's a year before it can be re-presented, correct?
Right, and so, um, I don't know what would be very different about, because it's specifically related to distance, uh, in this, in this case, um, but, yeah.
Okay. Well, there, well, I mean, the decision's been made.
No, no, just being...
Oh, as far as discussion with staff?
It's about the year, it's about the year, the year...
Yeah, we're going to have to have that outside meeting. You can have, yeah, it's not part of the meeting.
Well, I know I want to have a discussion with you folks about that, because my...
Yeah, but there's no business before the table at the moment. That's, yeah, that's, that, that's not within our control for, we're going to have to come back, that, that's the rules for it to come back, is either something substantially different or a year, and that's, that's not something we can waive. or a year, and that's, that's not something we can waive. So with that, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.